Mike, you ready?
We're ready to go.
Okay, we're going live. We call a public hearing to order. And we'll rise with the flag.
The flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God. Indivisible, limited, and justice for all.
Move the silence to the crane, please. Just go over the rules of the public hearing. It's for the members of the town of New Milford, or anybody else that's interested in the budgets, to come and give their comments on their opinion on the budget as been proposed by the town council. Since this is being streamed live, and Michael has the ability to get questions from people that are online, we will also listen to comments and the like. I shouldn't say questions, it's comments. It's not a conversation back and forth. It's all here tonight is to listen. This is the only opportunity for the town to comment on the budget before we have deliberations. As historically we've gone on, when we do deliberations, there is no public comment in that meeting. We just there for our deliberations. Anybody have any questions? No? Michael, does anybody want to have questions in there?
I'll just go to the podium and say something.
Okay.
You don't have to. Yay.
All right, Stephanie, Mike Sinello, 111 Willow Springs. So, just a little info to everyone watching at home. Because this is a public hearing, the chairman has broad discretion as to what he allows in the meeting. Since there's basically nobody in the room, if you guys have comments that you're going to put into Facebook that aren't wildly inappropriate, and are comments, because we're not supposed to engage, I'd be happy to use my time as a member, as part of public participation, to relate those comments to the Board of Finance, since Walter has afforded that to us. My commentary, before we get started, is that, so folks know at home too, and so it's on the record, the next item in this process for the budget is for the Board of Finance to engage in their deliberations. That will be happening tomorrow night in the Loretta Brickley Room, that's downstairs in Town Hall at 7:00 PM.
7:30.
7:30 PM, excuse me. We'll get that, that will also be live broadcast to both Facebook and YouTube. The next step, so that is where the Board of Finance has their back and forth with each other. They will not have, they will not be affording the public an opportunity for public comment. That's what this meeting is for. So hurry up and get down here, because this will be open for a while, or get your comments in on YouTube or Facebook, and I'll do my best to relate them to the Board of Finance verbatim. After all of that, the next step in the process is, and this has only come to my attention very recently, the town council on Monday night, E. Paul Martin, room 7:00 PM. Okay. On Monday night next week is going to have a special meeting to do nothing other than to set the date for the town meeting.
And...
And the referendum.
If the Board of Finance completes their...
Assuming the Board of Finance completes their deliberation process tomorrow night. And the town meeting is merely to establish a date for the referendum, or to confirm the date?
That's to have our town meeting, and then we will also then, the town council at that...
So that's the obligatory annual town meeting.
Will then set a referendum.
And the referendum date. Okay. So, that's a lot of clerical, for everyone who's paying attention at home. The commentary I'm going to provide is, you know, we've talked about how, you know, the town is required to have Charter Revision Commission review the charter every 10 years. This is all per-town charter, okay? So this to me seems like we could do, an opportunity for a Charter Revision Commission, though we are legally obliged to only put one together every 10 years, we could do it more often than that. And it could be the case that the Charter Revision Commission makes no recommendations for revision. To me, this seems like an opportunity to make a revision. So I don't see any reason why, if we have a public hearing, and we don't, and the chair doesn't expect there to be much contention, I'm basically the only one here in the room, why they couldn't hold their deliberations immediately thereafter. That seems like a place for a charter revision. And on top of that, when it comes to the deliberations, after they've completed their deliberations, I don't see why, since the Board of Finance is the last step in that process, from a purely clerical standpoint, the Board of Finance couldn't then just simply set those dates that the town council's going to have to have a special meeting for on Monday. And that's all that's going to be on the agenda. So, to me, that seems like an opportunity for some charter revision. So, as long as that's on the record. All right. I'm now going to go look at some commentary, if the chair is going to afford me some time to go look at some commentary and relate that, if anyone is.
Just to make sure, Michael, you don't have any commentary on the budgets that's proposed?
Yeah, let me get my thoughts on the budget. I don't have thoughts really on the budget itself, but I would like to make this commentary. The, and this should be made basically at every step along the process. This money that's being decided upon, this budget, is not your money. It's not the town council's money. It's not Pete's money. It's not the Board of Ed's money. It's not Alicia DiCorpo's money. It's not Wendy Fallon-Bach's money. It's my money. It's my family's money. It's the money of 28,000 people, and all of the residents who either directly or indirectly contribute to this taxation process, and contribute to this entire budget process. So, I really hope, throughout the entirety of this process this year, and moving forward, the way that this is expended, that this is expensed, the way that this process takes place is taken extremely delicately. The other thing to consider is that not only is this not your money, the town council's money, it's our money, is that it's not something that was exchanged voluntarily. This is ostensibly taken at least, but with the threat of force, and therefore should be handled extremely delicately. The idea that a problem can be resolved by just spend a ton more money and wash your hand of it is wildly inappropriate for a system of, for a representative system of governance, period. No matter what that expenditure is. So, I don't have anything specific to say about the budget process, about the budget itself this year. If I were to make revisions, it would be like foundational revisions that, I don't know, I'm the crazy libertarian in the room, I'd like to see something completely different. I'd like to rethink completely how we'd handle certain things. It's a super minority friend's position, so not really here to comment on that. And it's kind of way too late in the process for me to be inputting that. And also, so folks know, I know I'm here for all of these meetings, but while they're happening, so folks know, so I don't get people jumping down my throat, I can only pay like 50% attention to the actual content of the meeting because of what I do. And when I actually do review these meetings, I have to review them in post. I have to review them after the fact. Which, if we wind up having problems on Facebook like we had on Monday night, so folks know at home, link is in this video's description on Facebook, you can easily go to YouTube, where we've never had any problems, and just search Town of New Milford. Just search Town of New Milford, that's where our channel is. If you've got a Google account, would love to have the subscribership, so please do subscribe to the town's YouTube channel. If you ever want to watch this entire budget process, this video is now being included as part of, as part of a playlist entitled "2022 Joint Budget Hearings", which I'm probably going to change to just "2022 Budget Process", so you can see the joint budget hearings, you can see the town council's deliberations, you can see tonight's public hearing for the Board of Finance, you can see the Board of Finance's public hearing, and whatever is going to be related to the budget process. So, in post, if you want to review the whole thing, it's all on YouTube. I've made it as easy to search for as possible. Again, all you're going to do is go to YouTube and type in "Town of New Milford", it'll bring you right to the channel, and all the videos are broken down as clearly as I possibly can there. So, like I said, if the chair is willing to allow, afford me some time, I'd like to use some of my public comment time to...
Sure.
Go check on things.
Walter?
So it's our discretion tomorrow night, deliberations. We could take items here and add or subtract.
Yes.
Okay. Or collectively, we could go yea or nay, the whole package.
Yes, that is correct.
Got it. Okay. Okay, thank you.
And while Michael is getting some stuff together, some of the people came in a little later when we were having a little pre-discussion on the length of the meeting. And depending if people come in or not, or more people come online, if we have a period of time with nobody here or nobody online, we'll end the Town Hall at 7:30. If, obviously, you know, if there's people waiting to talk, or people aren't here, we'll go as long as we, there are people there to discuss this. But I can't see inconveniencing the members of the Board of Finance, the mayor, if there's nobody here, to make those comments. So that's what we'll do for there. Michael, if you have anything?
I just want the record to show, it's now 7:12. And I don't have any commentary on any of the videos on Facebook or YouTube, so I have nothing to relate to the Board of Finance about that. So if anyone says, you know, "Mike, he didn't pass this through", well, it's 7:12 and I got nothing, so.
Now you do have...
There are, I believe, three people watching on Facebook and two on YouTube. So the chair's aware.
And they so far haven't commented.
I haven't seen any commentary.
Okay. Well, we'll give it a while and see if anybody comments online, or comes in late. If not, we will adjourn it, as I said, at 7:30. That gives people adequate time to do that, or come in, you know, late for that.
Should bring in any cookies or some kind of dessert, or tea. No?
You could have tea, but not dessert.
Oh, okay.
It is still lent.
Yeah, that's true.
Remember, people, we are live, and your microphones are live.
All microphones are hot.
Okay, fine.
So, nothing for you.
Oh, all right. I'll get over there.
Or on YouTube, not on Facebook.
Wow. Increasing. After Mike's speech, they're like, you know.
There we go. Okay, so, new rule from me. So folks know, we are, I will gladly use my public comment to relate to the Board of Finance, that which needs to be, which folks need, would like to be related to the Board of Finance. Please, in your commentary, start your commentary with the two, three letters, B-O-F. So I know which commentary is just banter, and I know which commentary folks would like to relate to the Board of Finance. The only one that I think that is intended to be related to the Board of Finance comes from Greg Bolero. "I support the budget in full. Thank you for allowing us to participate."
Did Greg leave an address by any chance?
Oh, yes. So folks know as well too, we do need your address, or an address that brings to you.
He's a New Milford resident, right?
Yes, he is absolutely a New Milford resident. I don't know what his address is.
And actually, technically, you don't have to be a resident of New Milford to comment on the budget.
Correct.
Is that so?
Pardon?
Is that so?
Yes, it is.
Ah, of course, okay.
At public comment, that is not open to all public. It is open to...
I believe it's to residents and taxpayers.
Residents and taxpayers?
No. No. Not according to...
Walter's interpretation's been my interpretation as well.
CCM, when I took a course on legalities of meetings and Town Halls.
Greg Bolero is at 10 Wellington Drive.
That anybody can participate in it, but they have to identify where they're from, and that can, you could weigh their comments based on that. Example, Pete, is, Mr. Mayor, I should say, is, we have teachers in here that would comment on the educational portion of the budget, and they don't live in New Milford. So they would comment on that. That's as an example. There's been further examples, not over the last 10 years or so that I can remember.
This has to be quietest, unless it's the body it's ever been.
Mm-hmm. Walter, did you see the big bear in the neighborhood?
I'm sorry, pardon?
There's a very big bear in the neighborhood.
Yes.
Did you see it?
No.
Okay. We've gotten into a lot of garbage.
We have to build a containment unit to keep the bears out of our garbage.
Really?
We have to build a concrete garbage storage.
Michael's coming up again?
Wow.
Okay, so, again, to be clear for folks watching at home, the Board of Finance's public hearing is an opportunity for the public to address the council, not a back and forth. So this is why I'm reading comments, not questions. If you would like to direct something at the Board of Finance, again, for those watching at home, I suggest that you put B-O-F at the beginning of your, no, put B-O-F at the beginning of your comment, so that I know that it's not either banter, or just a comment that you're putting on the video, but something that you would like to direct to the Board of Finance. So that would explain why that, why the question from Merlin GM has been skipped. Merlin, if you'd like for me to read this, let me know. It doesn't look like something that was necessarily directed at the Board of Finance, and I don't want to relate to the Board of Finance, something that people are just having as banter on Facebook, because maybe they don't want to go into the public record. Anyways.
Michael, just so you know, as you get comments, then just come right up. You don't have to do anything, and take as much time as necessary with the comments.
Merlin, we're going to need an address. Merlin GM. What steps are taken to increase town revenue without raising town residents' taxes? I realize that's a question. I realize the Board of Finance can't actually answer that right now. But Merlin, we will need an address.
What, Mike, can you repeat? What was that, what steps?
Correcting for some grammar here. What steps are taken to increase town revenue without raising town residents' taxes?
Got it.
My commentary, thank you Tommy Zito for starting your comments, starting your comments with, in parentheses, chatter, so I know that this is chatter. Merlin GM is at 142nd Hill. Stephanie, let me know when you're ready.
Go ahead.
This is, again, from Merlin GM. Board of Fin, oh, sorry. This is a question as well. Can you please answer questions on free pass for seniors as you will look at 10,000 revenue from that? Still 142nd Hill.
Walter, as we have people file into these videos, could you just restate, can you just restate the procedure here real quick?
For those that are watching online, I want to inform you that you're free to put comments through on your Facebook or YouTube page, whichever place that you're watching. It's now roughly 7:20. And if we get no more comments in the last 10 or 15, next 10 minutes or so, we're going to adjourn the Town Hall. So if you're online and you want to get questions in, please do that, through the appropriate channel on whichever platform you're using.
Address. Merlin GM, I'm going to correct for some grammar. How often are the town finances audited for fraudulent purchases and expenses? Again, so folks know at home, if you've got commentary that you'd like me to enter to the Board of Finance, through public comment, I'm happy to do that, make sure your comment starts with the letters B-O-F, so I know that you actually want that to be related to the Board of Finance. Additionally, so folks know at home, this is a public hearing for the Board of Finance to hear your input, it is not a back and forth. Functionally, it's very similar to public comment at, say, a Town Council meeting. So, Walter has said that he's going to be closing the minute, meeting in just a few minutes, so if you want to get your input in, this is the last opportunity you'll have to do that, for all intents and purposes, before this goes out to referendum, so if you want the Board of Finance to hear that, before they conduct their deliberations tomorrow night, last chance, folks.
Yes, I was just going to ask, Michael, if there's anybody else that you deal with?
There's one more, I'm going to do the last one.
Bring it on.
Oh, excuse me. Oh, here we go, okay. This is Merlin as well. What provisions are added to help and grow small businesses in town in the budget? So, Walter, I think you said that you wanted to just about close, so I'll end my public comment. Thank you.
And I just want to remind people, and thank the people that listen to online, and put in their comments, tomorrow night, as been mentioned earlier, we're going to have our deliberations, Board of Finance, 7:30, in the Loretta Brinkley, Brickley Room. There, so reminder to people, the Board of Finance does not have the ability to make line item adjustments in the Town Council budget, all we can do is broad categories, I'll review those categories again tomorrow night, before we have that, and I believe I sent those categories out by email, so Walter, we got to get you a copy of those categories and the dollar amounts that are in there for that. Michael, one last check, anybody there?
One second. That's it.
Okay, then I'm going to entertain a motion to adjourn the public hearing.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Can you hang out for five minutes?
Sure, I can hang out.
Joe, can you hang out?
Yes.
Larry for five minutes?
Yes.
Okay.